Call to order. Welcome, everybody. Grand Forks City Council Meeting, Monday, March 1st, 2021. Roll call, please, Marine.
Weigl.
Here.
Dockler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Vean.
Here.
All present, have a form.
Thank you. 1.2 Pledge Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end. That's great. I know, that's awesome, everybody. Well, we got a couple of things, and we'll get to everybody. Let's see, 1.3 Mayor's Announcements. It's been a big few weeks in Grand Forks for sports. I got to go on Saturday night to the state high school game, got to see Central B Red River, glad it went to overtime, it was a good game, but I think the right team pulled it off in the end, they had a good team. And then UND football pulled off a big win. At the same time, we gave around 2,000 vaccines out at the same time, so while that football game was going on, 2,000 people got vaccinated, so it was really a great day. And then, of course, UND winning the Penrose Cup and going on further. I want to thank Senator Oven and Senator Kramer for their visit during the Air Force Base, that's where I was two weeks ago when I had missed the council meeting, and President Sanders, thanks for stepping in and taking over. I want to thank Chief Nelson and all the volunteers that were out there at the Polar Plunge on Saturday to benefit the Special Olympics. We had some warm weather, but it seemed to get pretty cold on Saturday, just in time for that event. And then, one other announcement, the State of the City will be coming up on March 17th at 6:00 PM. It'll be a little bit different this year, it's going to be virtual instead of the big event at the Hilaris Center, but definitely excited to have my first State of the City. That's all I got for announcements today. Two awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations. So we've got our legislative visit, 2.1 Legislative Committee update. Got our legislative visit coming up, we'll be heading out there at the end of the week, setting up some meeting with state agencies, the Lieutenant Governor, the Governor. Certainly excited to get out there, express our gratitude to the state for all their help, and got some work to do as well. So with that, Todd, do you want to start?
Sure, I can. I can just give a quick highlights of what we're doing. Number one, Mayor Bochensky, thanks for joining us, along with Councilmember Sandy, Vean, and Cavami for joining us along the way. We are anticipating around 50 persons to join us, and when we talk about Team Grand Forks, Mayor and City Council, we're talking the city, public schools, UND, EDC Chamber, GFK Airport, and finally, the counties, so we'll be well represented there. We are going to be able to meet with all the department heads of all the cabinet themselves, and so you may have noticed today, James Lahn, who's been a friend of the city of Grand Forks as part of Commerce, was newly appointed as the Director, so we'll be able to meet with he and his team. Director Panels from DOT, Dr. A. Hager from University System. And then finally, on Friday, after the reception on Thursday evening, we will be also, we just added today, General Dormand will be meeting with us, and if there's one person that's really been key in our pandemic fight, it's been Alan Dormand and the National Guard and Emergency Services, so that'll be great. And then finally, the Bank of North Dakota, and then we're going to finish up with Governor Bergerman, Lieutenant Governor Sanford, so it's going to be a great day. We are at crossover, and so as Council Vice President, Mock doesn't need the lecture, they're going to get back at it this week later. And so with that, we got a couple of bills that we are going to testify on, so I asked John to come out and give you a heads up on a couple of bills that we're going to testify on, and then we'll be done today. Thank you, John.
Mr. Bernstein.
Thank you, Todd, Mayor's Members of Council, safest I've ever felt in this room. I don't know about you guys, but this is great. They go back into session on Wednesday, the legislature does, and we have two bills we're going to provide testimony on this week. House Bill 1386. Now, this was a bill that was, the term is hog-housed, they amended it by rewriting it, and this bill started as only the limitations on the state, but they added political subdivisions, making it that a political subdivision cannot change the hours and/or capacity of any establishment in their political sub. So that one got completely changed. So, Mr. Gossett, I believe you're working on testimony on 1386, correct?
That's correct.
Right, thank you. And then, and that one's going to be on Wednesday. On Friday, House Bill 1300, now these bills are on the Senate side, this bill is relating to special assessments. We provided, we didn't provide testimony in the first half of the session on this bill, but we had quite a bit of discussion with it, and Mr. Gossett and Mrs. Norstedt will be working on testimony for that one as well.
What we actually did was provide written testimony at the House side, and we'll be there in person this week.
That's right, so in person. That's on Friday at 10:30. And other than that, I would stand for any questions relating to bills, or if there's any comments from our Chairs, Mr. Weber and Mr. Vean.
Mr. Weber.
Mr. Mayor, if I'm very sure, the quick note that any efforts to curtail emergency powers have to be considered beyond just COVID and to consider all potential emergencies, so that's part of the approach there. At the beginning of the session, the city was tracking about 125 bills. We'd provided written and virtual testimony on 22 of those, five in support, 17 in opposition, 10 of those remain, five that we support, five that we oppose. Currently tracking 82 bills. It's probably worth noting that the majority of our work focuses on securing funding for transportation needs in the city. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Vean.
Maybe just a very quick add to what Mr. Weber said, especially on those emergency services, you have to obviously look well beyond just the COVID. I think you go back to our 97th fund, and you'll still have plenty of opportunities, or should be able to show examples, I guess, of where you have to have emergency services beyond just COVID. That's all.
Absolutely. Any other comments or questions from Councilmembers? All right, thank you for all your work, Mr. Vean and Mr. Weber, on tracking. It's quite hectic, you guys have been doing a great job, so thank you.
Thank you.
2.2 COVID-19 Update.
All right, Mr. Doolts will come in a second, but as I said before, I think the vaccine roll, it's been going great, I think Mr. Doolts will have some slides on that. The exciting news today is that we moved to the, through, we finished up tier, Phase 1B into the final tiers, Tier 7 and 8, which is childcare and K-12, which just got opened up today, so that's pretty exciting. Lists are going to be starting in those two groups, starting today, and I think Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday, they'll be able to start getting vaccinated, so it's pretty exciting that we were able to move so quickly and relieve some of the concerns there. And we're still one of the best counties and one of the best states. Is that right, Mr. Doolts? I'll let you take it from there.
Mayor Bochensky, members of the Council, I'm Michael Doolts with Grand Forks Public Health. Just going to do a little bit of a data update. Overall, when you look at our dashboard, things are looking very good for us right now. We continue to have decreases in the number of new cases, and our dashboard has been staying solidly in green for the past seven days. With that, we are also seeing good indicators that our testing is still continuing at an acceptable rate, and our percent positivity is still staying pretty low. Looking at the vaccine side to start out, we broke 12% of our population that is now fully vaccinated, so received the two-dose series. Now that we have the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine that will be coming to our county in the near future, that number will go up a little bit faster because we will only have to do a single dose for somebody to be considered fully vaccinated. That 12% accounts for about 8,300 people, so we're about 20% of the way to that 60% marker for what we would consider presumptive herd immunity. Looking at the combination of Grand Forks and Polk Counties, our numbers are very similar, with 11.66% of the population receiving those two doses of vaccination, and we're right around that same 20% to our 60% goal. When we compare Grand Forks to our peer counties, as well as the state as a whole, we are, again, continuing our leadership in this category with Grand Forks a full two percentage points higher than any of the other communities or the state as a whole for their average. When we compare Grand Forks to our regional peer counties, so this took the information from the city salary plan, the comparable communities, and we compared our vaccination rates to those comparable communities, we're about fourth on there. It would be pretty tough for us to beat Olmsted County, which is where Rochester, Minnesota is located, and, you know, the Mayo Medical Clinic system, so they had a pretty easy time getting a jumpstart ahead of us, but overall, we're in the top tier of communities when we compare to regional peers. Comparing, taking a look at our new case rates, our case rates are still staying relatively low, this is for Cass County, and then when we look at all of our counties as a whole, Grand Forks is now at the bottom compared to our peer counties and the state as a whole, so we are solidly in the yellow on that category, and we're continuing to see downward trends there. Looking at our PCR and antigen testing combined, we're second in the state when we look at our peer counties. Again, we're staying strong in this category. I had a lot of concern because of the long-term care facilities, having to kind of wind down their testing efforts as their residents get vaccinated and their staff get vaccinated, but if we don't have them getting tested, then that's less of a chance of a false positive for them, so they are just sticking with what the CDC guidelines are right now for testing in those facilities. Our weekly case sum, again, one concern that we had was that we were still seeing weekly case numbers in the 50s to 60s, and now we're getting down into the low 40s for the number of cases in total that we're seeing per week. This does give extra confidence, you know, with the health officer, you know, making a decision on how he wants to move forward with the mask order. And then the health officer score by day, as I mentioned, we are at seven days now in green. The last time we had a seven-day stretch in green was at the beginning of July, and so, you know, when we compare timeframes, you know, this is something that we haven't seen for a very, very long time. One thing I did want to touch on, though, as we, you know, look forward, is making sure that we don't forget the human cost of some of the outbreaks that we have experienced, and comparing, you know, our experience to some of the human costs that we've seen in other communities. So the thick black line on this graph is the cumulative deaths per 10,000 for Grand Forks County, and this is a way for us to compare the number of deaths we had in Grand Forks County to other communities. We are fortunate to say that our number is pretty low on this graph compared to our peer communities, but we did see, you know, significantly higher numbers of deaths in, you know, controlled-for-population in Stutsmann County, in Ward County, in particular, in Ramsey County, and in Burley-Morton. You know, there is still a lot of power to this virus, and outbreaks do have consequences. So looking at the consequence of outbreaks, so this is, look at the incidence line, so this is a cumulative look at the number of COVID-19 cases in Grand Forks County since our first case in the county, and then, you know, also imposed on there is a look at the cumulative deaths. So, you know, you did see when we had a significant increase or, you know, a large outbreak, deaths did come with that, and, you know, since things have kind of trailed off, the deaths have started to go down again. You know, during kind of what I would look at as the, you know, major outbreak timeframe, there were about 55 deaths, and then, you know, and then there were a number of additional deaths after kind of that outbreak trailed off. So looking at the bottom line, you know, we are doing, I think, really good as a county and as a state in the number of COVID-19 cases that we're seeing, and we're also seeing our testing rates stay up, which does, you know, give me confidence that, you know, that this is a true number. We're doing a really good job of getting vaccine out. Last Saturday, we gave out 2,021 vaccines, you know, roughly, you know, three-fifths of them were initial doses, and the other two-fifths were second doses for individuals. You know, we saw that big jump, that big, you know, 1.2% jump because of the, you were finishing out those additional vaccine allocations we got at the beginning of February, and so we're kind of seeing the results of that and seeing that jump up. Our vaccine allocations are remaining consistent, we keep getting indications that we should be planning for additional vaccination, which also does help provide confidence for the future, as well as the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine will be coming to the community this week, to the state this week, and presumably to the community. Again, we are staying in green, there's not a whole lot on the weakness side. Opportunities, we're still doing a good job in contact tracing, and we're still moving along on the tiers. Even from the time when I, you know, sent this to the, you know, to the city to be uploaded, we're now in Tier 7 of Phase 1B. You know, and then on the threat side, you know, the only thing that causes me a lot of concern right now is the unknown with the new COVID variants. You know, I really don't have any way that I can kind of, you know, look at how those are going to impact us, you know, but, you know, that is something that we should be cautious of. You know, we haven't received any indication, though, that, you know, that it is active in our community. With that, I'm available for any questions. I include additional slides for, you know, things I've previously talked about, if you're looking for updates on any of those.
Well, Mr. Doolts, thank you again, as usual, both your work up here, your work on the data, and also at the distribution site, so definitely appreciate that. Any questions for Mr. Doolts?
Mayor Bochensky, we added the wastewater, the ever fun to look at slides on the wastewater, and so those are very low right now, so we just added that to agenda, and I forwarded it on to you, so I think it verifies, the numbers are low, and our wastewater is low too, so that's another positive sign, so thank you.
All right. All right, thank you, Mr. Doolts.
All right, 2.3 Proclamation, School Safety Patrol Day, March 1st, 2021.
All right, this is exciting, this is why everybody's here, at least most of you are here today. I'm going to read the proclamation, and I'm going to hand it over to Karma Hansen to choreograph the rest of it, so we'll start with that. Proclamation, School Safety Patrol Day, March 1st, 2021. Whereas the city of Grand Forks is proud to salute the accomplishments of exemplary organizations as they celebrate significant anniversaries, and whereas one such notable group, the American Automobile Association, is celebrating its 100th anniversary of the AAA School Safety Patrol Program, a program embraced by several elementary schools within our community. Whereas the AAA School Safety Patrol Program is a program that enlists the assistance of select students who volunteer to help younger students as they cross the street on their way to and from school, and who help to protect their fellow classmates against traffic hazards. And whereas, the concept of school safety patrolers began in 1920 when Charles M. Hayes pledged support for protecting school-aged children after witnessing a terrible car crash. Whereas the program is now 100 years strong and continues to have a positive impact on schools, students, and communities. Whereas the AAA School Safety Patrol patrols play an important role in helping young pedestrians learn and fulfill responsibilities regarding traffic safety. Whereas millions of U.S. boys and girls have honorably served their classmates since the program began. Whereas today, the AAA School Safety Patrol Program is the largest school-based safety program in the world, with more than 679,000 patrollers in 35,000 schools across North America and 30 countries, providing a safer environment for child pedestrians and offering a spectrum of educational opportunities for schoolchildren. Whereas Grand Forks is the only community within North Dakota with active patrol programs within its schools. Whereas it is fitting that the members of this General Assembly should pause to specially recognize the AAA School Safety Patrol Program and those outstanding students who have dedicated themselves to improving the safety in their respective communities and schools. Now, therefore I, in recognition of the 100th anniversary of the AAA School Safety Patrol Program and the dedication and commitment of the student patrolers in Grand Forks schools, I do hereby recognize March 1st, 2021, as School Safety Patrol Day in Grand Forks, and I call this, and I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. Thank you. Quite the mouthful there, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Bochensky, and members of the city council. My name is Karma Hansen, and I'm the coordinator of Safe Kids Grand Forks, and I would like to call upon two guests that I have here with me today. The first one is Gene Leduser with AAA, who is, AAA is the founding sponsor of this program, and so I'm going to call upon Gene to come up and give just a brief little history about it. Gene.
Mr. Mayor and members of the committee, I'm Gene Leduser, and I serve as the Director of Public Affairs for AAA, the Auto Club Groups, Heartland Region. As the current school year marks the centennial of the AAA School Safety Patrol Program, I'd like to formally recognize the city of Grand Forks, school administrators, elementary principals and staff, along with Safe Kids Grand Forks for their dedication to school safety and the development of young leaders in this community. Foremost, however, I'd like to recognize the service and dedication of the young leaders gathered here with us tonight, as well as their parents. The School Safety Patrol Program was formed in Chicago in 1920 to protect children while walking to and from school. Since that time, the program has grown and expanded with patrolers taking on a wide range of responsibility. Today, 35,000 schools sponsor patrol programs to help protect classmates in all 50 states. Since 1949, when it was established, more than 440 patrollers have received the life-saving award for saving the life of a person who is in imminent danger. AAA patrolers have grown up to be U.S. Presidents, Governors, members of Congress, Supreme Court justices, astronauts, Olympic medalists, educators, executives, and community leaders throughout the country. While the program has widely been praised and adopted, Grand Forks is the only community in North Dakota in which schools currently implement the program. This demonstrates a commitment not only to safety, but also to the development of young community-minded leaders like those with us tonight. In recognition of the community's ongoing support, I'd like to present each of you with a commemorative centennial pin, and the city with a School Safety Patrol Centennial Flag, which, Mayor, we will present to you prior to our leaving, I understand. Thank you.
I would like to express my gratitude to Gene and the AAA program. They are outstanding partners in this effort, and very supportive of the work that we do in the schools. They launched the program, as you know, 100 years ago, but they continue to help with funding, the paddles, and the vests, and the training. Safe Kids goes in and does the training each fall. Will help the school with selecting leaders, but AAA is a huge one of our partners in financially supporting it with the curriculum and the supplies. Gene talked about the fact that the students that are in this room, and there are a lot of them, these are not just students that get to say, "I want to do this," they are selected by their advisors, and their teachers, and their principals in the school for being leaders. Not just anybody gets chosen to be a safety patroller. The role that they have is super important, because they do need to be responsible, they need to be good role models, and they do need to make sure that they are helping to keep the other kids in the school safe. And back when this program started, we had one of the students who was selected as North Dakota Safety Patroller of the Year. As a fifth grader, he started out before we even formalized this program in our community, working with, at the time, then Sheriff Ross, and he is here with us tonight. He's a senior about to graduate from Red River, and I'd like to call upon Camden Larson.
Thank you, Karma, Mr. Mayor, and the city council for having us here tonight. I'd just like to extend my appreciation to the AAA Safety Patrol Program as well. As Karma mentioned, I was fortunate to be able to participate in it now seven years ago, when I was a fifth-grade student at Kelly. Through that time, it enabled me to kind of learn what it meant to be a leader really early on, and has inspired me to continue serving my community as a member of your youth commission, as well as a member of the Substance Abuse and Prevention Committee, working to ensure that our community remains a safe place for all citizens. And I'd like to thank each and every one of you for continuing that legacy and participating in the program. It certainly does make strides. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Camden. I would just like to say, as you go to and from schools around our community, we have six schools that have participated in the program currently, there are three. Those three are here and represented tonight, and I would like to call upon them, and they can wave their hands, as I call upon them, first, Discovery Elementary.
There's our students from Discovery.
Lewis and Clark. And Viking Elementary. We had three other schools who were trained, but COVID has kind of rocked our schools a little bit this year, and things are a little bit off, but we hope to have them up and onboard. We are also getting ready to launch this at South Point Elementary in East Grand Forks here now this spring, so we're excited about that. As you drive by the schools, you might see adults there, those are crossing guards, that's different than the safety patrolers. The safety patrolers are student leaders, they are not able to go out into the street, but what do they do? They help with getting kids in and out of the vehicles, so their backpacks aren't getting caught in the doors, or their jackets, that they move away from that car, and they're not sliding under when there's snow on the road. They help kids to understand that while they need to wait for the school bus, they should stand away from the bus route, because there are a lot of blind spots around those, and it's a big vehicle that might not stop that easily, so they help with that. As kids start to ride their bikes in the spring, they help them with getting their bikes into the racks, and making sure their helmets are on, and that they're fitting right. They do, as kids are walking, there's lines marked on some of the sidewalks that they remind them to get past that line and stay away from where the moving traffic is. So these students have a lot of responsibility, they're there on the cold days and the hot days, they're there when it snows, they're there when it rains, and this is what we have for this year, but there have been a lot of them that have come before them, and we are just super, super proud that these kids, they could be sleeping in, or they could be in the lunchroom, or they could be visiting with their friends, and they are showing up to help keep our kids and our schools safe. I am just super proud of them, and I just, I think this is a shining example of how community and a school partnership, and a Safe Kids partnership, and a business partnership can come together. I want to just read just a couple of quick quotes. We asked these students to fill out a certificate of why they were a safety patroller. If you're here, raise your hand. Jay Lee, "I love helping kids and keeping them safe." We had Trinity that said, "I wanted to help kids be safe, and I also wanted to help the school." Brielle said, "I get to help kids cross the street, and I get to help talk to the little kids." Brendan said, "I want to help them be safe, and it makes me feel good. I also want to be a good citizen." Ian said, "I wanted to help the world and lower the death of students getting hit by cars." Joseph said, "I wanted to become a leader in society." Amelia said, "I wanted to make sure my school and friends are safe." Parker said, "I wanted to help with helping people while crossing the street without getting hit by a car." Shayla said, "I'm kind, and I'm really good at helping kids." And Carson said, "I wanted to save lives." And I really want to thank these students for being a part of the celebration tonight. So if you want to come down, Mayor Bochensky, and accept the flag, thank you so much for letting us be here this evening.
Well, that might have been the funnest thing I've got to do since
Well, that might have been the funnest thing I've got to do since being mayor, so that's great. We'll give him another minute to shuffle out. It feels like so much energy just left the room. All right, we still got our job to do. Onto three, public hearings and second readings of ordinances.
Three point one is a public hearing in action on 2021 CDBG and Community Services Grants Programs and Allocation of CDBG SV Round Three.
All right, I will open the public hearing on three point one. Public hearing is closed. Any questions, comments, concerns from council? Got a motion from Council President Sandy, second from Mr. Kavami. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Three point one carries unanimously.
Three point two, public hearing on request to vacate a portion of the stormwater retention pond easement of lots two, three, and six, Block One, Myers Third Edition, located at fourteen hundred South Forty-Eighth Street.
All right, anyone here will open the public hearing to three point two. Public hearing is closed. Questions, comments, motions? Got a motion for approval from Ms. Mock.
Second.
Second from Mr. Weigle. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Three point two carries.
And three point three, public hearing and second reading of ordinance relating to electric franchise fees for Xcel Energy in Nodak.
Well, I think we've gone through this quite a bit, and I see the couple gentlemen are here. We'll open the public hearing again, three point three. Public hearing is open, public hearing is closed. Any motion for approval from Mr. Sandy, second from, was that Mr. Weber?
Yes, sir.
Second from Mr. Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Three point three carries unanimously. Four, action items. Now, is there any that council wishes to be polled?
Four point three.
Four point three, do we have anyone that was here to speak on any of these items? Okay, four point three will get polled. Anybody online, anything you want polled, Mr. Weber, Mr. Vean, Mr. Weigle, and Ms. Docler?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
All right, we'll move forward on the consent agenda then. Four point one, four point two, four point four, four point five, four point six, four point seven, four point nine, four point ten, four point eleven, four point twelve, four point thirteen, four point fourteen, four point fifteen, four point sixteen, four point seventeen, four point eighteen, four point nineteen. Okay, that was an interesting one there. Where was that? Four point twenty, four point twenty-one, four point twenty-two, and four point twenty-three. Can I get a motion for approval? Motion from Kavami.
Somebody called four point eight.
Four point eight was an introduction ordinance, so we got to, yeah, thanks. Yep. We got a motion and a second from Mr. Sandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. All right, let's do four point eight.
Do you want to start with four point three, or?
Well, I think we've got some, yeah, sure, we'll go four point three. Let's not forget four point eight, though.
All right, four point three, introduce ordinance amending Grand Forks City Code to allow gaming within designated lounge areas of Class Four, food and beverage, alcoholic beverage license, and revised ordinance is attached.
And Mr. Gosted, could you just maybe highlight the, you know, you were asked to more define the area, could you just highlight that on the ordinance?
Again, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, if you take a look at, it's the amendment to twenty-one dash oh-two-oh-five, letter H is where I added the language that this designated lounge area shall be sufficiently separated from the other areas of the establishment, and that there'll be signs at each entrance into the lounge area to notify patrons that no minors are permitted. And I think that's what was directed at me at the last meeting.
Thank you, sir. Was there anyone that wanted to speak on four point three? Yep, please, come forward, sir. Yep. And just state your name and your address for the record.
Masked.
Yep, you can take it up.
Okay. Hi there. Mike McManamy, eighteen nineteen Cotwood Street, here in Grand Forks. I also own and operate McManamy's Tavern. I didn't realize this was going on until I heard about it last week. I would really like to say to you guys, I really would like you guys to pump the brakes on this, perhaps table this and take a better look at this and see what's going on here and what's happening. I firmly believe that if you do this and if you allow this, you're going to be opened up in a great big can of worms. It's not going to stop at the restaurants. I'm thinking convenience stores will want it, gas stations, on and on and on. And the reason why we have all these classes of license is because back in nineteen ninety-two, I don't know who's aware of this, prior to nineteen ninety-two, Grand Forks, like most of the cities in North Dakota, had limits on license that they issued, and the Grand Forks was based on population. As the population increased by, I believe, twenty-two-hundred-and-fifty people, a new license become available. While in ninety-two, the City Council then, which I believe was a fourteen-member council, they decided to change that because Applebee's wanted to come to town, there was no license or liquor license available, and Applebee's said, "We're not coming to town unless we get a liquor license." So the council then moved to open up the license, or take the limits off the license, I should say. And as you can imagine, the bar owners then, there was a, you know, quite a controversy and quite, you know, a debate on it. Well, it went through, you know, and since then, there has been all these classifications to protect the liquor license holders, and also because of the liability and the responsibility that comes with having a liquor license. And I firmly believe that if you're going to allow Class Four license to have gaming, you need to take a look at the whole system again or the whole setup again. But mostly, I firmly believe that this is just the start of something more. So you go back to ninety-two, and one of the things that the license holder said was, you know, if you take the limits off, you're going to have bars opening up on every street corner there is. So some of the things they did was they put a fairly high price to buy the license, at that time, which I believe was fifty thousand dollars, don't hold me to that, but then they started again, you know, having the classifications. So I have a Class One license on off sale beer, wine, liquor, I can have gaming, and I can have live entertainment. And then you go down from there with these classes of license. So with that being said, you guys have any questions for me?
All right, go ahead. Any questions, Mr. Sandy?
Mr. McManamy, nice to see you again.
Nice to see you.
What is your big, what is your major concern?
My major concern is what's going to happen is that the minors are going to have access to the gaming. And my concern is the restaurants, and I understand this was approached by the people, they're not going to want paper pull tabs, they're not going to want blackjack, they're not going to want pig wheel, they're not going to want coin boards, they're going to want the e-tab machines. And I firmly believe that it's going to be hard for the restaurants to police it, and they're going to have troubles with minors getting at it. And not to mention, like I said, I feel this is a can of worms that's going to be opened up. There's going to be other places that are going to come after, you know, the same thing, you know, why can't we have e-tab machines? You know, I know, I just heard there was, it has to be a designated area, you know, for the restaurant park, and, you know, you look around, it's, yeah, there's some, there's a designated area, but it's not hard to gain access to it. You know, as a minor, you know, getting on the premise, that's half the battle. The other half is, well, getting served. You know, us Class One license, it could be twenty-one to get on the premise. At least, you know, if you get in a restaurant, you can go in, it doesn't matter if you're five, ten, fifteen years old. So those are my two big concerns, the minors getting at it, and also, well, for the sake of you guys and us, that other places are going to approach you to get these e-tab machines also.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there any other questions, gentlemen? Ms. Mock.
Since maybe you were paying attention at the time, do you recall why Class Four licenses were prohibited from having the gaming? Did you recall that discussion at all?
Oh, Jeannie, that is a good question. But I think they wanted to go Class Four, so again, well, I keep saying minors, so minors can go with mom and dad, you know, so the kids go with mom and dad to the restaurant to get something to eat. Mom and dad can have a, you know, an alcoholic cocktail and still take the kids out. So they just, I think they wanted, you know, say, okay, so no gaming, no live entertainment, you know, trying to separate the classes. And then I think, it's been a while since I've looked at it, it's also a different price or renewal fee every year. I think Class One is still the highest. I don't know, I haven't looked at them in a while to see what the rates are, the fees are. But I believe that's what it was, Jeannie.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
I got one, or go ahead, do you want to go first?
Well, yeah, so I don't know if you heard the story from last week, but the impetus for making this change was due to some of the folks, the not-for-profits coming forward saying, "There aren't opportunities for them to have gaming to help them raise money for their nonprofit." So I've been taking the approach, or at least my thought process all along has been, well, we need to try to figure out how to fill that or fix that gap. Do you, out of curiosity, you obviously have gaming in your establishment, would the other Class One owners, like, it would be great, could you expand your gaming section and so that you bring in another not-for-profit, or, you know what I'm saying? What I'm saying is it makes no sense, that doesn't, you can't do that, right? You have the gaming that you have, and it's what you have, and having a different person or making more space isn't going to increase the amount of places where the not-for-profits can go to do. So I don't know how we have a catch-twenty-two. We have people that want more gaming locations, and we have at least one person that has gaming that doesn't, that is concerned about opening up that can of worms, so I don't know how to move forward on that, Mayor. After you, sir.
Yeah, no, I mean, I can certainly understand that. I do think there are still some differences between a Class One and a Class Four, and if my memory serves me right, I believe in Fargo, there's Buffalo Wildlings that have e-tab machines that have managed to keep minors out, so there's, I mean, there is other places we can look to see how they've managed that, because I think that's the last thing we want. If it's straight a competition thing and you're concerned that you're going to lose some customers to other places, I can see that concern, but I think that's a difficult one for this body to have to decide, because we try to do the best we can at keeping, you know, the private sector, leaving that to its own devices. So, you know, I'm interested to see what council has to say, but I think it's something that we can try, if it's something that doesn't work and there's that concern, and certainly if a convenience store wants to have this, they're going to have to come in front of this body. So some of those concerns, I think, are valid, and some, I think, can be sort of legislated out by this body, so that would be my thoughts, but I'm just the mayor, these are the ones that decide around me. Mayor, if I may. So I think this question is probably from Mr. Gosted, but if someone, if a minor is found in that area now, the restaurant would be liable to a fine or some sort of penalty, even without gaming, correct?
Yeah, the way the Class Four sets up right now is that there is a designated area of eight hundred square feet that minors are not to be allowed, if a premises wanted to have that lounge area, and minors are not supposed to be in that designated area.
And so if a minor is found in that area and then gets their hands on any of these machines, who's liable for that?
Well, ultimately, the person that participates could be sanctioned, and I would suspect if the premises holder is allowing it, they may have some sanctions imposed upon them as well.
So they'd be taking the risk on by signing up?
Everybody is taking the risk by violating the law.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mayor? Yeah, Mr. Weber, sorry.
Well, thank you, sir. First of all, when we made the motion last week to approve this change, I did say in the spirit that was just commented on by President Sandy, there are important nonprofits in our community doing good work that are heavily dependent upon revenue from gaming. I understand that revenue is coming down, so this sounded like a good way to help boost that. But I appreciate Mr. McManamy coming tonight and providing this context. This doesn't seem like a terribly urgent matter. It's not like we have someone waiting to open next week, I don't believe, anyway. And I had previously asked that Mr. Gosted consider bringing forward a review of all of our ordinances. With that spirit, I wonder if this might be something that could be tabled until we have that larger review, and I'd be interested in Dan's thoughts on that.
Yep, I do know, I do think there is at least one organization that is waiting to do some remodeling based on how this moves forward, so there is at least one organization, I believe, that is waiting, but as far as the larger, yeah, I mean, we could certainly do that. We certainly have more time, we've got two more weeks before the second reading as well to make further decisions on this one, but, sorry, do you want to repeat, what did you want Mr. Gosted to opine on?
Well, I've requested that we have, you know, every few years, it feels like it's been appropriate to do a review of all of our ordinances with the new city attorney. This seems like a good time to do that, especially as we've had a number of requests coming forward. Look at the current ordinances, and some of our classes of license, we haven't even issued for some time. It seems like it's, we're overdue for a good review of those ordinances, and perhaps these kinds of issues could be considered in a more comprehensive fashion.
Thank you. I don't think there was a question there, but he's got, Mr. Gosted's here and he's smiling, so he's got that, and I believe we do, we have started the committee that was going to look at the broader, is that correct, Mr. Fiona?
Mayor Bochinski and Council President Sandy, I thought we were going to push this to the fifth Monday, and this would be kind of the 1A topic after we get through some City Council action items, so that was our intent, is just to bring it all to this, to maybe the whole working session, if that works for you. That gives Mr. Gosted some time, and maybe for him to get some feedback on what specifically you want to delve into, but that's what we were targeting.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McManamy. I'm going to see if anyone else is here to speak on the matter tonight, so you can, go ahead and sit. Thank you.
Mayor Bochinski?
Yeah, Mr. Weigle.
Based on Zoom here, it looks like, I can see Mr. Lucky in the crowd there. I've had the opportunity to have some conversations with them and on this subject, and brought some concerns that were relayed to me, but, Mr. Lucky, can you tell me why is this important for an organization such as yourselves? What kind of impact will it have? And from my understanding, there's potential that it could also help maybe some low-income families get into youth hockey or something along those lines. Can you just maybe elaborate a little more on that for me?
Yep, thank you. Brad Lucky, two-eight-nine Emerald Lane. I'm with Grand Forks Youth Hockey. We began exploring this just a little while back here, and what we found was that availability of gaming sites in Grand Forks is now extremely limited, they're all virtually occupied. Our goal in our organization is we're constantly trying to provide more opportunities for our members and trying to keep our costs down, like everything else, I think, the cost of activities, and especially for our kids, continues to go up, so we're looking for ways to fundraise. This was one of the opportunities we started to explore, keeping those costs down, and then also our scholarship programs and everything, I think are things that are difficult to do without raising costs. Availability of this, I think, would open a lot of doors to us, so ourselves, along with other youth organizations I've talked to, have had similar conversations, so appreciate you guys looking into it.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments from council?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yeah, Mr. Vean, please.
Yeah, maybe for Mr. Gosted. How are minors controlled? Does somebody in the bar ownership have the responsibility of monitoring if minors are going in or not, or to actually identify if they're underage? Are there any penalties if the establishment doesn't monitor it appropriately?
Councilmember Vean and members of the council, the monitoring exists today because if they're going to have this designated lounge, no minors are to be in there today, and whether there's gaming or not. So the penalties for being within an area that you're not allowed, I don't have all the penalties, but you'd be in, a minor would be within part of the licensed premises that they're not allowed to be in, and whatever the sanctions are for that, I don't have those on the top of my head, so they'd be subject to sanction, the individual that's in there improperly, and also... So they'd be subject to sanction, the individual that's in there improperly, and also the license holder could potentially be subject to sanction too. And I know they do routine checks for minors within bars already. But other than that, I don't know the precise way that license holders, Class 4 license holders that have these designated areas are monitoring it, other than asking for identification before somebody enters or while they're in there. That would be the way to monitor it, is the way I understand it, so.
I think it's my understanding too, for a minor to be involved, they would have to, at some point, cash out their winnings, I would suppose. And at that point, there would also be an identification process. I guess I'm not seeing as much of a concern with the minors. You know, there's plenty of different instances where minors can sneak into an area that they don't belong, and there's mechanisms in place for that. I guess that's just my opinion.
Mayor Burchinsky?
Yeah, Mr. Weigle?
I guess just one thing I'll bring up, as an 18-year-old, I enjoyed playing blackjack. I enjoyed playing some of these games in a responsible manner. And while I couldn't do so in Grand Forks, I could hop across the river and go to Menomen or Thief River Falls Casino and play these games. So I think some of the concern about somebody that happens to be under the age of 21 but is over the age of 18 with gambling, they can already do that by going across the river to a casino. I know a lot of our establishments are real strict. If I go to Buffalo Wild Wings and I sit in the bar, I still get carded, and I'm 31 years old. So they do this routinely. The police department monitors these places routinely. They attempt to buy alcohol with an underage person routinely, so I think they're heavily regulated already. I see this as an opportunity for our nonprofits or other nonprofits to get involved, to help some of those organizations. With that, I'll move approval as the ordinance has written.
We got a motion for approval from Mr. Weigle, do we have a second? Second from Mr. Kwame? Any other weigh-ins? Ms. Mock?
I guess, I thought maybe last week we had talked about discussing alcohol permits a little bit more. So perhaps it's just because Mr. McMenamy called me and got into my head, but I'm a little bit more hesitant. I guess, in all fairness, I can see why more nonprofits would like the opportunity. But I guess I'd like to fully understand the implications if we would change the license, the, I guess, necessity of changing the license versus perhaps reviewing our current licenses and the differences between all of them. So I guess I have a few more concerns after hearing from constituents this week than last week. But if we're going to move forward, we're going to move forward, so.
Yeah, I do think, like I said, we're going to have a couple more weeks. We probably aren't going to have perfect information on this one. You know, regardless, if we waited two years, sometimes, you know, it takes action to figure things out. But any other comments from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll be voting against in the hope that we can have more information in two weeks, even if it's not perfect or complete information. I would prefer a more comprehensive approach to this, but that's how I'll be voting tonight. Thank you, sir.
Right, yep, and we will have that second reading regardless. All right, any other questions? All right, why don't we go to a roll call on this one, I think it'll be split a little bit, so. You got your paper, I'll get it ready, Maureen, too.
Yep, got it.
Mr. Weigle, yea or nay, please?
Nay.
Ms. Dockler?
Nay.
Mr. Weber, I think we already know your answer. One more, sorry, I think I cut you out one more time for the record, please.
Nay.
Ms. Mock?
Nay.
Mr. Kwame?
Yea.
Mr. Sandy?
Nay.
Mr. Vean? You're muted, and it doesn't matter. Just for the record, sir?
Nay.
All right. I got two yays and five nays.
That's what I show as well.
All right.
Mayor Burchinsky, if I could ask the city council, am I right to say, to bring this on your work session on March 30th? Or would you like something in preceding that? Is March 30th okay to bring it just to that working session? Okay, that's what we'll do. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Gosted, this fails the first reading, will it still carry to the second reading, or what's the other process there?
I don't think it carries to the second reading. If it fails, it fails. I think we'll do a comprehensive review, and I said that at the committee, the whole, that I would take a look at the entirety of the chapter, the city code with respect to alcohol licenses, and we'll consider this as part of that review, even though it failed, we'll consider it as, to bring it forward at that point as well.
All right, thank you. Two to five, yeah, two to five motions defeated.
Mayor Burchinsky?
Yeah, Mr. Weigle?
Mr. Gosted or Mr. Fionna, whoever's wheelhouse this might be in, but when you bring this to our work session, could you bring a list of the current four or five charities that receive funding from gaming from Class 1 establishments, so that we have an idea of which ones are involved, and maybe take a look and provide ideas that if we need to limit how many places these places can be in, instead of, I'm not sure if there's, one business has five locations, maybe in an effort, if we don't want to go down to Class 4, maybe we need to look at limiting that you're only allowed to have one place of gaming, in an effort to open it up for additional charities or nonprofits to be involved. So I think what we're seeing now is four or five wonderful charities or nonprofits that do amazing work within our community, but I think they've got this locked down pretty tight, and I think maybe that would be something that we need to review further as well.
Yep, and I know certainly we had Class 1 license holders that were against it. I'm sure that there is certainly many, many Class 4 that would have been for it, so I think it's worth further discussion and look forward to hearing the outcome. So thank you. 4.8?
Introduce ordinance amending Grand Forks City Code Section 9-0505 relating to labor in lieu of fine.
All right, this one was just to introduce the ordinance. Was there any questions or comments? Nope. We have a motion, motion to approve from Ms. Mock. A second from Mr. Sandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion to introduce the ordinance is approved unanimously. And we are on to five informational items.
5.1 is update on the request from Northern Air.
I thought this was kind of a good story in the end. We had a couple business owners that were able to get together and find a way that Mr. Lee could find a path forward within the current code. And I want to thank Mr. Lee for numerous times coming in front of council and putting the work in, and also the work he's done to keep Northern Air going. I think that's a great attribute to this town, and, you know, a horrible time to be running that type of business, but to be able to have that recreational facility and someone that, you know, putting themselves in debt to keep it going, and that this was a path forward that was within current city code, I think it's a win-win all around, so. Thank you, Mr. Lee. All right, six citizen comments. Doesn't look like we have anybody left. Looks like all city staff here. So we'll move on to seven, approval of minutes and bills.
7.1 is the vendor list and engineer's estimate as presented.
We have a motion to approve. Mr. Sandy, motions to approve. Second from, let's see, who wants the second? We'll give it to Vice President Mock. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. We will carry that motion carries. And number eight, city administrator comments.
Nothing further, Mayor, thank you.
All right. Nine, mayor and council member comments. Mr. Weigle, any comments tonight?
Just real quick, congratulations to Coach Bubba Schweiger and the UND football team on a big win. His dancing skills are getting much better. If you haven't seen him, go take a look on Twitter. And also, big congratulations to Coach Barry on winning another Penrose Cup for University of North Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Weigle. Ms. Dockler?
Just one quick thing, the 2021 Feast of Nations this year is virtual and free to the public, is at 7:00 PM. This is different than in years past, and so it's really exciting that it's free and will be recorded as well. It's a great opportunity to see a lot of the cultural performances that are represented by the folks that live in our community, particularly from our students at the University of North Dakota.
Thank you, Ms. Dockler. All right, Mr. Kwame? Mr. Vean?
Nay.
All right, Vice President Mock? Oh, did we forget you, Brett? I already had you crossed out there, I didn't mean to ax you out. Let's go to Mr. Weber, sorry, sir.
Very good, just quickly, hats off to President Armacost and the renaming of the High Performance Center for Fritz Pollard Jr. President Armacost is a great leader at UND and in the community. Congratulations, and my thanks to him.
Thank you. All right, now Vice President Mock.
I was just going to say it was quite the thing to watch, I can't even imagine doing it, but to watch Red River and Central get to play their final game, final tournament at the Ralph would be really cool if you were still in high school. So they seemed very excited, and both teams did an excellent job, so it was very exciting to watch.
Well, I said it, the students were all there, pretty exciting, pretty excited, and not probably quite the social distancing we would have wanted, but mask usage was excellent, so. Mr. Sandy?
Yep, certainly, hats off to my alma mater for bringing another one home. I hope this continues the stretch of many more in the future. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. As for my comments tonight, I'm just, I'm really grateful that the community's going forward positively on so many different fronts. You can just feel the optimism in the air. It's not just the weather, but it seems to be our sports teams, our developments, our businesses, a lot of things going in the right direction, and it's just pretty exciting. Glad to be a part of it, so. That's all I've got tonight. With that, we'll go on to 10. Do we have a motion for adjournment? Motion from Mock, and a second from Mr. Kwame. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Anybody not want to adjourn? All right, we are adjourned.